Good afternoon, everybody. It's 5:31. We'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any public comments?
Uh, no, sir.
It was just one thing in mail.
Oh, the one online, yes, the one that I emailed you guys.
Yeah, I read that, Ms. Carlton.
And that's online also.
Okay, number three, Dr. Dyer's on the way. She'll be here later. Number three, um, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So, the staff previously reported to you guys that the General Assembly gave us the $750,000 for the finishing up the coastal storm damage reduction project to couple with the federal money. And what we were told at the time is that it would flow from the state to the Corps directly, but that is not what has occurred, and they've sent us the $750,000 by electronic transfer. So, we need to recognize those funds so that we're good. So, this is the budget amendment does that, and you guys would just need to accept the budget amendment for us to be solid on the books. I will say that that won't, $750,000, won't all flow out in one year, just to kind of re-educate on how that goes. As the federal funds come to the Corps, then they request our part, so this will be over a couple budget years.
But we have the whole 750?
We do.
Good. Make a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
An anonymous Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Number four, budget workshop. Mr. Hewitt, is that you?
I, I think so. We've got your spreadsheets prepared for you, and just as a little preamble summary, if I could direct, to give you an idea where we are, we're about 300, let me start by saying this, the budget is not balanced at this point in time. But it's, it's probably a good position to be in because the reason why it's not balanced is that your revenues are higher than your expenses at this time. And in the, the general fund, and you're going to ask me, well, by how much? And in the general fund, if I could direct you to page 24, and at the present time, on page 24, the 1, 2, 3, 4... I'm sorry, 1, 2, 3. Let me get on the right page, not page 24, I'm sorry. It's in the governing body on page 9. 1, 2, 3, 4, five lines up, the line titled "Available for appropriation." That's your positive delta. Your revenues at this point in time are exceeding expenses by $313,970.
And that's the general fund?
Yes, ma'am. Likewise, for the water and sewer fund, on page 44, that same line item titled "Available for appropriation" is ahead 10,249.
44, you mean 20?
20.
40.
Page 24, I'm sorry.
That's where we were a minute ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And in the B part fund, it is page 30, the line entitled "Available for appropriation." You're 100, almost $160,000 ahead. So, that's the, that's in summary where you are at this point in time. And if there's, if you want to do any programmatic or line item discussions.
So, David, can I ask you a question? I think you have some of our objectives that we've scored in here, right? So, I tried to map it myself, you know what I'm saying? Like, I see you have improved, number eight is in there, improve audio video, and number two, complete pump. So, if you could help me?
Where we could discern at those, we've gone ahead and plugged those.
Which is great, but I, I'm not sure that I've mapped them all because some of them, like, there's the ADA, but then there's also the, there's another ADA thing that's on the list. So, if you could help me as we go through and make, tell me which ones of these of our objectives are in here and which ones are still outstanding?
And I haven't performed that exercise yet.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't.
You know what I'm saying, though, right?
Yeah, and, and that's.
And some of them don't even cost any money, which is fine.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
But, but that's part and parcel of what I do next is I, is I dovetail those objectives in with all of these inputs and make sure that those things are in there or identified into that aren't.
Oh, perfect, because like, number one is the ADA compliance obligations, and number six is like ADA compliant bathroom, so I don't know, you know?
The one is the, the compliance specialist to come in and do that in-house assessment that you asked for, and then the other line would actually be the construction of those amenities, I'm assuming, without looking at it specifically.
Okay, but you'll do that when we get to the next iteration or something? You'll be, you'll be doing that mapping for us?
And what I hope to do is to bring that, those specific things out in the body of the text of the budget message. So, it's not just for the commissioners, but it's for the populace at large that identifies those things where they're in the budget. Because remember, the budget message has got to have a, a, a real good explanation about what goes into those, the proposed budget ordinance.
Yeah, but I think we need to see it way before that so that we can make some changes if we need to.
But you, is what you're getting at is that you want to see those things before the budget message is delivered to you?
When are you delivering the budget message?
Well, if we want to talk about it, I need about three weeks to adequately pull all these things together and to perform the requisite quality control that goes into making sure that these numbers, what's behind these numbers is, is, is correct. So, I would, I would assume that, that it's going to be close to the end of, of May before I can get that done because I'm not going to be able to start on it this weekend.
So, I, I don't, I don't understand why you're saying that because if you look on page 8, right, page 8, like, it says there, "Communication," and in there you say, "50K for new meeting camera system." So, to me, if I look at my BOC objectives, that's number 8, improve audio video at town meetings. So, I'm just trying to map what you've got in here to what these things are as we go through it. I'm not asking for like some fancy, I just want to see what's in here and what's not. And then if there's things in here that we identify that aren't in there, then we've got to make some cuts somewhere else to make sure that they get in here if they're in our top priorities. Does that make sense?
And I can't get there from here with these spreadsheets in that timeframe. I'm telling you that the way that, that it has to happen is I have to craft this message and present it to you as a draft budget, and you have to rely on my abilities to articulate all of those goals and objectives that the commissioners are setting forth because that's what the proposed spending plan represents, is it represents those goals and objectives that y'all have identified.
That's what we've done in the past, yes, sir.
I mean, that's the statutory requirement.
Yeah, I know that's the final version of it, but what I'm saying is, I need to know, like, number three, complete pump station number two upgrade, where is that in the budget right now? I'm sure you know, and if I look through it, I could probably pick it out myself because I know you have some money in there for it, including the grants and all that stuff.
Okay, so the, um...
And that's the exercise I'd like to perform as we go through this over the next few weeks. And if it's not in there, then we got to take something else out to make sure that it gets in there. So, there it is on page 23. 4.7 million pump station number two, and that's, that's item number three in our objectives. You know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not asking for a big formal presentation. I just want to make sure if something on this list is not in here, then something else has to be removed so that it can be, or we have to make the decision consciously so that if whatever you have in there is more important than what's on the objectives, which is, which may be the, may be fine.
I think you have to let me prepare the draft ordinance and present it to you, and that will enable you to go through that. But, but what's, what's before, hey, but what's before you today? Even though I said it's not a balanced budget, it, it's, it's probably a good thing to have because your revenues are greater than your expenses. If it was upside down the other way, you would have, I mean, it would be, it would be a different perspective.
Except I can't tell if that's okay because I don't know if you have all the things in there that we need to do unless I map it, or you map it, so I guess I'll map it.
But, but that's what I'm trying to communicate, that it's my job at this point in time to make sure that all those things that you've laid out in the goals and objectives are in the budget, and if they're not, I have to identify those to you.
So, did you try to do some of that in the first, this draft right here, in this first version?
Every, everything that we've talked about, we've attempted to include those line items in here. But, I, I mean, I'll be force- right with you, the way that we've conducted the budget hearings so far has pretty much been decentralized. It's been from the, it's been from the staff to the board, and, and now is the time that my function as the integrator of all of that comes to bear, and, and that's how the draft budget is presented to you. So, it's my time, it's my turn, it's my turn with the stick now. I, I don't know if that answered your question or not, it's my best attempt at doing so, though.
So, what do you see as the next steps?
I see that I got to get real busy over the course of the next three weeks to get, to make sure that we got a good, a good draft budget ordinance to lay before you for your consideration and evaluation of exactly what you're, what you're articulating you want to do.
And when do we give our feedback on whether we think things are reasonable and shouldn't be in the budget?
It would be after that draft, that draft ordinance is presented to you, just like any other ordinance is presented to you that, you know, you guys redline or add to and take away. Just because I'm putting it out there, it's a draft, it's, it's your draft.
So, it looks like at the schedule, there are three budget revision meetings after we get the budget message. Is that correct?
Is that the last page?
It's the last page.
There's, there's like nine budget messages after, you talking about the ones in June?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was not clear.
Yeah, there's a, a bunch of them there. There's, there's plenty of opportunity in the June timeframe to...
Do you think we could get the draft budget to us maybe either the day before the Board of Commissioners meeting on the 21st or on the 21st?
No, I, I'm, I'm not going to commit to that because I, I am not going to be able to start looking at this thing until Monday, and in order to nail that down, I, I, I can't commit to having it by the 21st. I, I just, I can't commit to that.
Be the, maybe the end of the month? Somewhere I know with her.
Yeah, well, I'm supposed to have it done no later than the 1st of June, but that whole weekend, normally Memorial Day weekend, I don't get to do Memorial Day weekend stuff. I get, I put, get to hit the final staple on the budget message and deliver it to the Board.
So, what's your date that you're proposing, that you're going to bring back this draft budget? Because we have it on May 14th. I mean, that's what it looks like to me, so that we would have ample time to make any changes, and you would make some revisions.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about that. You have to understand that the commissioners aren't writing the budget message. The manager prepares the budget message for your consideration. And we've had a series of workshops, and everything has been laid out on the table. And I, I, I mean, the analogy I use is that we've dumped a whole big old bag of shrimp and fish on the back deck of the boat here, and now it's time for, for the, the one crew member to go in and make sure that the fish are picked out, and we only have clean shrimp going forward to the wholesale house. That's where we're at.
So, is it the 29th of May, you should have that figured out?
What, what day, what day is that on?
May, it's May 29th, and then the budget message is released May 31st, so you should be pretty close at that point, I would hope.
Well...
Does that make sense?
I think that my, my point is, is that the next deliverable is the budget message. The next, I mean, that's, that's where we are with the budget message, and, and again, the budget message is a draft ordinance. It delivers a draft ordinance with the message part of it articulating what's in the ordinance and the considerations and the justifications that, that the Board puts forward in order to, to have a right at that position.
Okay, so all the meetings we had before, all the people presented their stuff, and to me, that was their wish list. This is what I want, and it was your wish, wish list on the general fund, and that's what I'm seeing in this that we got today. Is that a fair analysis? This is what I want. This is all the things I want.
Well, these were put forward as the items necessary to deliver the service levels that exist today, and because there were, there were, there were no hands raised to say that that's not a service we want, yes, we did include all those.
Okay, so that's the misunderstanding because when we were going through that exercise, and it was my, it was my understanding that we were just listening to the wish list, and we didn't give any feedback to say, "Don't include that, that, that probably isn't needed." We asked clarifying questions, but we didn't give you any direction on whether or not we thought that should or shouldn't be in the budget. Is that a fair analysis of how the process went? Because that's how I was doing it. So, now, that's why I think now is when we get to say, "Well, okay, we probably don't think that you need this, let's vote on it." Should you have that in there and be more proactive before you do the budget message and say, "This is probably too much, can we take that out and see where we land? If we have one of these other objectives in there, we probably don't need to have something else that's in this."
Well, I mean, and that's part and parcel of the manager's function, in order to do that, when I referred to the, I've got to scrub now to make sure that everything in here, because I have not scrubbed this. Again, it was the department heads that brought it to the Board.
Right.
I have not looked at it with a critical eye. If you'll notice, one of those columns that's on there does not include the manager's recommendation. So, I have not performed the manager's oversight of the department head's wish list yet.
Okay, that's fair.
But, all of the stuff that they put forward is in there absent the manager's critique, the manager's efforts to integrate those kinds of things into the budget.
So, now you're going to go through and determine whether or not you think all of those things are necessary, and then you're, that's when...
I'll make a judgment.
Right.
As to where, if there's something that's inappropriate.
And that's fair, I mean, that's, that, so that's fair, that's your pass at it, but I feel like we haven't had a pass at it either, and I...
And, and your pass at it comes after I, I deliver it to you.
Okay, and when will that be?
That'll be May the 29th, it sounds like.
Okay.
Can we do it?
Depending on what day that is.
It's a Wednesday, I believe.
Right after Memorial Day.
Okay, now, as far as the message being delivered to the Board, that message is delivered to the Board. It does not have to be delivered to the Board in a work session. It does not have to be delivered to the Board in a meeting, so you'll get a package at home.
Perfect, I mean, then we can review it and scrub it and take time to...
Right. Absolutely.
So, May 29th is a Wednesday, and we currently have a budget meeting on that day. So, that's when you're saying you're going to have the draft budget, which is what's in the schedule?
Yeah, and I would, I would say that you don't need that meeting on the 29th for me to hand you a document.
I mean, really, we were supposed to have a budget draft on the 21st, but you're saying, I mean, that would have been the first draft and present on the public on the 22nd, and then another draft, and then the, the message. Because if you were releasing the message before we've had our chance to give feedback on the draft budget, I'm not sure that's probably premature.
Well, that's the way it's supposed to work. That's, that's the way it's supposed to work. The, the manager delivers a draft, a draft budget to you, and then y'all hack it apart.
Okay.
So, we really don't need a meeting on the 29th? You're going to give us a package so we can review it and make, and, and make...
I, I think that your next meeting is June the 3rd.
So, my concern is that now we're squashing it all like they've done in the past, and we only have a few meetings before it's time to adopt the budget, and that's, you know, we, I just, that's my concern, but...
A few meetings, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I think three meetings is sufficient, don't you? I mean, we'll have to do the work, but hopefully it's not going to need that much work.
Well, we haven't had any input yet. We haven't put any input into it yet, so...
I'm sorry, what I said is I was hoping that three meetings should be sufficient for our scrub on the budget.
I would think so, sir.
Well, we make a recommendation, he has to make the changes, he comes back, we have to look at it, okay, we'll see. If we have, if we start and we don't have enough time, then we'll reassess.
To, to the turnaround time on any revisions that you may have, from past experience, whenever those revisions are decided on, the administrative piece of that is not bad to turn around.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not bad to turn around because at that point in time, it's, it's, you know, change, repopulate a cell in a spreadsheet.
Right.
What will, for the, for the, it'll, it'll be dependent on how extensive the changes are that you want to make, and that dynamic with the Board is what will be more critical.
David, if, if I see a change while you're doing your scrub, I can send it to you, and you'd certainly entertain it as part of your scrub at this point, right?
If you see an obvious error that we made, where we went, where we went, well, we put $10,000 in instead of a million, yeah, that's a definite oversight kind of thing.
Okay, but if I saw something, I said, geez, take a look at this, I'm not sure this is appropriate or not, would you take that comment, or you just want to get...
Well...
No, because the Board has to decide on that as a whole. He can't...
I'd, I'd listen to it, but I'd, I'd make that decision on whether or not that it was material enough.
Right, right, it would be for your consideration, not by direction, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not looking for more work, believe me.
And, and I'd encourage that, to be quite frank with you.
Okay.
Are we going to have the meeting the 29th or not?
So, before you start cracking meetings off there, just so you know, I talked to two of the firms today. Sidney said she's available the 14th and the 21st, and the Grove Law Firm is available the 29th, so I don't, I mean, we could solicit other dates for them, but I just solicited budget dates because I figured you guys were making it.
So, can they make it all, make it all the 21st?
No, it didn't.
The Grove Law Firm definitely said they want, they want to come down from where they're from, so they, the 29th is their preference. Sidney told me the 14th and the 21st. I don't know if she would change her mind about coming on the 29th, and I haven't heard from the third firm yet.
So, what you're telling us is let's don't can the meeting yet?
If you maybe wanted to keep it reserved for me.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
But it would be for the law.
But for the, instead of budget, it would be for the...
Yes.
For you? Um, they did not have a preference, if you, I mean, you're all here now, you were talking about the schedules, so you guys are all fine with it. The 29th, they did have a preference in the time, so I don't know if you guys have a preference in the time if that day still works.
Yeah, I think three works for me, actually. I don't, that's a Wednesday, so...
That's Memorial Day week.
It's after Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Memorial Day week when everybody takes off because they get Monday free.
And I could probably push it further if you guys want. I just didn't, I thought you'd be more into budget in June, so I just...
Correct, I would rather not mess it up with the budget stuff because we're already going to be...
Pushed.
Yeah. I mean...
Do we do it all on the 3rd? Or do it on the 7th?
No, personally, I like to be concentrating on the budget on those. Who knows how long these could take in, you know, another hour?
Shouldn't take long, it'll be pretty much done.
That's the earliest they could do it, Heather?
The 29th, yeah, I gave them the date of all the budget meetings, and they came back and said the 29th is when they would want to do it.
Okay. What time of day, Heather, the day?
They did not say. They asked me to get back to them with the time of the day, if it was possible.
Are you going to schedule them all on the same day?
I'd like to. Like I said, I haven't heard back from the third one. Sidney said the two other dates, but she also told me that Tuesday is her research, well, the other was Monday, Tuesday. I'd have to check with her if she could do the 29th. I can't make it free.
They'd have to be later in the evening. 3 o'clock in the afternoon's kind of tough for those who have activities.
Yeah, I can't do evening on Wednesdays, but...
And I could ask them for a different date and get back to you guys, too, if it's completely ...
Well, yeah, ask them, yeah, don't, I think if we're not limited to these days that we already had scheduled, that maybe we can have more flexibility or with them, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I just, I took these budget dates.
Yeah, yeah, because they were already in our calendar. That makes sense, so, and I would prefer sooner than later, especially if we could do it in May so that June could be set aside for budget.
Could they do it at the regular BOC meeting in June?
No, we talked about that. We don't want to add that to a BOC meeting. They're already long enough.
That would be my concern.
That was, that was Heather's recommendation when we talked about it at the meeting on Tuesday.
What can we do it on the, the 17th, the day before?
Uh, what are we looking at, June now?
No, May.
17th of...
No, June.
The May meeting is the 21st. Are you, do you want to say the 20th?
Do you kind of want to send me your availability for May, and then I'll go from there? I'll see if I can find a date and a calendar for everybody.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that because we're, we strayed from the agenda.
I could do the 20th in the evening.
Yeah, if you guys give me dates and times, you all send me that for May, I'll reach back out to them and try to get them all on the same day, and then, do you know how long you'd like to give each person for a slot?
Probably an hour at the most.
Yeah. Okay.
So, that was agenda item, whatever.
All right. I want you to cancel it before I figure that out for you.
Hey, where are we at?
I think this is where I get to ask some questions.
So, the 29th stays on the books right now?
Yes, sir.
Are we working on...
So, now we're going to look at the budget and ask questions on what's in front of us, right?
We're on 4B, I believe. Is that right?
No, we're still on A.
Expenses?
Yeah, now we're going to go and look at the pages and see what we have questions on, because now that we had a general overview of the process. You want to go first, Rick?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything complicated here, but as usual, I have some I just want to ask about. On page 11, we've got insurance and bonds. I'm assuming that's at the new rates, David? We're not waiting for, I'm sorry, on page 11, insurance and bonds, we've got $98,000 and some change. Is that the new rates?
And that's, that's property liability, culpability, all, blanking policies, that's what that is.
And I just noticed there was no dues and subscriptions for anything up there? Right above that? I mean, it's not a big number. I was just kind of surprised it was blank. I mean, it's not a big number. I was just kinda surprised it was blank.
That didn't matter. Did you just have that, Daniel? That may be a callback, again, TC, a callback.
I wanted it to be.
See, I can help, yeah.
While we're on that page, can, can we talk about the 42,000 for software support? I, I'm surprised that's so high. I, I know you got the new software, but I thought that was all implemented last year. Why is that carrying over into the new budget so much?
There's still, we haven't paid out that line this year. If you look at this year's current spend, it's only 8,000, so it's just carrying forward on this year.
Okay, that makes sense. Can we go back to nine? What are those contributions? Are those to charities?
Danger's got that list.
Yeah, those are contributions to, I actually don't wanna have to list them here right now, but it's whoever requests. It's typically like Frontwood Family Assistance and several different charities. Frontwood Search and Rescue, which that's actually in the police budget. Those are several different charities.
So I wonder why the town is actually making charitable contributions with taxpayers' money?
Um, that's basic, based on past precedents that has carried forward, and then those are backed up by annual requests.
I'm not even sure that's legal. Remember when we went to our class and they said that that actually wasn't legal? You had to have a direct benefit to the town for that? So search and rescue would make sense, but that's obviously in a different one, but just generic charities? You might wanna look into that. Because they definitely told us that that was not, you can't contribute taxpayers' money.
I believe what I recall, I could be wrong about this, and please look into it, but I think it was like you couldn't make a contribution, but you could enter a partnership, whatever that is, so, um, anyway. I've got an extra question.
Go ahead. I'm gonna go to my next one.
Have, have any of the auditors questioned, I missed you at...
Uh, no, sir.
...for the years, many years.
Not sure they would've been looking at that level. Would they have been looking at that level of detail in the audit? I thought it was more...
That's an audited question. I don't know.
Okay. Chief got a question for you about the new detective? Um, I'm assuming that, that individual's benefits and, uh, fight and all that's reflected in the lines below in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Great. Um, let me see. So I see overtime's up a little bit. Assuming you got a new detective, would the overtime go down?
In theory, but the way we do...
I love theory. I'm sticking with theory.
The way, the way we do that formula is based on worst-case scenario. We have to allot for hurricanes and everything else, just like the numbers. I gotta figure out...
I got you. So it's a little bit of contingency funding there?
It's a lot, lot of contingency fund.
Okay, all right.
You said 12. You'll notice that this year is not 23 compared to what was actually budgeted. So we do not use it if we don't have to.
Okay.
But it, it needs to be there, so if we end up in an emergency situation, we're not in here, you know...
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. I understand. Thank you.
Um, and just...
Do you fund that hurricane contingency?
Sir?
Didn't we have that in situations like hurricanes?
Correct.
And, and the way that'll actually work is that the, the overtime, because it's teed up, front-loaded, ready to go if we need it, and when you need it during a hurricane, then you get it refunded back to you because of the preparatory effort, so...
I got you.
Not that we want a hurricane.
Can you look at, uh, page 20, the EPA STAG? Can you tell me again what that is?
Oh, yeah, and that, that nomenclature is, is misleading, because it represents not only the EPA, I believe that that acronym is state, tribal, and local government is what that represents. Uh, 2.69, it's page 20, 2.69 million dollars of that is the EPA grant.
Right.
And the residual, the delta up to 4.6, is the, um, 1.9, the $2 million that come, came from the state on the sewer.
So we didn't get the 23, I mean, did we not get the money in the 20?
We, we've, we've been approved for it, but we have not been awarded.
So that's why the actual is zero, and then the whole thing is again in the new budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, David, on that same line?
What is the, what is the correct term of the state money? It's the DEQ, DW, DEQ sewer appropriation, but that's what it is.
As I recall, in one of our previous budget meetings, we had a new estimate on the sewer on Palm Station 2. It was like 4.88. Is that, and that was the engineer's recommendation, because time's passed?
Well, he has 4.705 in the budget on page 23.
Yeah, it was 4.7.
Okay, so I'd, I'd seen the number in one of our spreadsheets that it had gone up, so am I, that's not the current estimate?
We gotta bid it out again.
All right, so just for your expenditure, Chris, that, you think the number I'm looking at right there is pretty close? I won't hold you to it. I'm just...
That number's based on the bid that came in last time.
The last bid. That's two years old, isn't it?
That's, no, it's a year old.
Yeah, I was just, I'd seen another number.
That's the best we got at this point in time.
I'd seen another number that was higher. That's why I had to question.
Well, that's the problem, because this is the bid that we have. This is how much money we have, and so if we don't have enough money in there, then we're heating through that excess pretty quickly when it comes in.
That's why I asked the question.
On that same page on 23, how the debt...
23?
The same page or 23?
23 was where I was with the 4.705. And then the debt interest and the debt service that went to zero, is that, that's 796?
That's moved over to, I forgot the page. New software. It's still, the water sewer funds, it's still...
New EOC?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be...
What page is it on now?
25.
It's gonna be all kind of 431 now, because it's, I think that's just the way they're counting.
And that's also the 20, on page 24, the EOC debt service moved over there, too? I assume, since it went down to zero?
That's correct.
And those are all on page 25?
Yeah.
Debt interest, debt service. Okay. So where is the reduction for 796 for this year for the debt service for that?
That is in...
Where would I see a zero compared to last year?
The debt service is up.
Oh, so those what numbers wouldn't add up to what's on page 25, is what you're saying?
Yeah, in the, in the current budget year, we budgeted 171,000, 279 for debt service sewer. And in the proposed budget, it's currently going down.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. That's the way to make it really confusing for us.
Yeah.
Well, you sprinkle on a little new software implementation at the same time.
But way to have the answer. Good job.
While she's looking, let me ask a question if I may. Page 16, Public Works Streets, um, salaries and overtime. Just looking at, uh, the 23, 24 budget, is the 3,500 a little low, Chris, or... I just wanna make sure you're comfortable with that number.
What line was that? I'm sorry.
Um, page 16, second line, salaries overtime. The number just seems a lo- low, looking at the budget history.
We'll, we'll relook it.
Yeah, just, that's it. I, I wanna make sure it's an acceptable number, and... Yeah, just, I'm just, yeah, I just wanna make sure it's a number that you, you're comfortable with.
Yeah.
On that same page at the bottom, where we're talking about bulkheads, you only need to get one done in the coming year? Is that...
That's what we've done for the last five years, and so far, everyone that's come in, we've missed the 30. I'm thinking next year, but that, that number should be pretty accurate.
But none of them are in danger of failing, is kinda where I'm going.
I went back and just, I sort of kinda graded them. I have a list. I was doing that, just like I do our street surveys.
Yeah.
Been knocking that one at a time, and we have been replacing them with, uh, line and the food and the moon.
Mm-hmm.
And we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
But I have had a few years where you might skip, but you don't ever know if we have a storm or something like that, one of them failed, and somebody needs something good back.
Right. While I'm in this arena, I did not see in here, and maybe I just missed it, but we wanted to redo the road assessment?
Yeah, I've actually, it's done a few over the last, so I do have any year left.
It'll be this year?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we could have wrapped up before next year, but on the streets paving that you see there, they don't really have any name, street to be paved, but I'd say that could be determined based off by the assessment.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna have that survey in, in time to accurately reflect the hard number that the survey says, so we're, we're 200 grand.
I just wanted to make sure the survey was getting done, because that's a good report.
We have enough, they plan, and I hope so that some of the engineers I want to be pretty much involved in the sewer, the solar drive. Some of the hardware, once I get the coal.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question on 26. Does 441 OBW rentals, is that the campsite?
It is the campsite as well as food trucks.
Okay. And then, if I'm looking at the parking revenue, um, you have the pier parking, you have the, you know, the incre- the, the one, and then you have the pier parking, so there, that's in addition to? So you're estimating 740 something?
Yeah.
740?
700.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that. So on the next page on this, um, what do we do on Turkey Trap Road Site?
That's where our sand source is, our sand mine, and we have to keep permitting active there.
It's, it's actually a bond. That, that's a, that's a bond in perpetuity until that mine is dug.
Yeah, on the next page, uh, 28, I know you said a lot of these, um, like the vegetation and the monitoring. You have to put money in there just in case you need to use it, right? That's why you have those in the budget?
Yeah, especially, that's especially so with the 65,000 for raking and tilling. We may not be required to rake until, but if the state comes in and says we have to, we have to. But I did take that down considerably from last year, because they only required us to do the raking once, and so far, knock on wood, no tilling, and we're kind of late in the season for them to come in at this point.
And, and the bad thing about it is, is we, we, when they come down and tell us, they, we gotta do it, we gotta do it then.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I remember what you're saying.
We gotta do it right then, and I, so we gotta have some walking around change.
Now, what's this, um, this, this 475? You have a whole bunch of stuff in there. Access?
Yes, and that line actually since your last budget...
What line is that?
It's access recreation.
475.
Since your, since your initial budget meeting where we talked about expenses, that line has actually gone up $35,000. And that's where the ADA projects are housed. So it, there's a, a listing out there to the side, and it says 6,000 for Cocina for parking lots, 120,000 to fix three accesses at 40,000 each. And then you see it says 801 OBW Avenue E Projects plus Bathroom at Avenue E. We don't list, I think, I think I had mentioned earlier that we don't list the cost for that, because we don't wanna give contractors an idea of how much the bid should be.
Okay.
Um, and then there's the other things put out there. The increase since your last budget is that we're estimating based on what we're hearing with the reconfiguration of Avenue E is gonna be about a 25% increase over since the March 8th budget meeting, where I presented numbers to you. So even though you don't have a total for those projects, they're listed, uh, to see, we've seen an increase. So that line's increased even since March 8th.
Thank you. So 29, um... What's this, um, this 25K to finish study, the third, it's, you don't have anything in the actual budget, but then there's a note to the side, 25K to finish study on the, um, CSDR study?
That's the budget amendment that y'all just did today.
Got it. No, that, we did a, it was way more than that. We did this 750.
750, right.
It says 725K to finish study.
Got it.
Yeah, and the, the difference there is, um, based on the, the full amount of money. So they've given us the 750, but it's based on how much we've spent to date so far.
And then the Black Q Project, so you're, you're, you're still putting 200,000 in for the stormwater?
Only because they haven't given us a number yet. We started talking to the engineer after you guys actually voted on the grant in, at the March meeting, um, and was proactive with that, because that's what we thought we took from it for a modular system, and it's just in there as a placeholder until we get a number. That'll be something that David's had several conversations with him, and as soon as we get a number back, that number will change to that number. But what has changed is that we put in the first time around, when you got these numbers on March 8th, we've gone back in and put 45,000 Block Q Professional Services, because there is gonna be some engineering that goes along with coming with that, and, and this is just a guest estimate. He hasn't provided that number yet either, but also there's gonna be engineering that comes along with him making a bathroom design. So to start out, we've put 45,000 there, and that wasn't there March 8th. But again, when he gives us a solid number, that number will update as well.
So that's for a real design for the Black Q bathrooms?
Yes, because right now it's just visuals, and it has to get to construction level so that we can accomplish the grant.
Okay.
On the next line down, it, for repairs and remodel, it seems like there's a question, like where is the Hatter's grant money?
That is, sometimes when you guys get these budget worksheets, yeah, you get old notes from, that are in the system, and that was from this year. That was a question from one of them to me, of where we were putting that for this year. So we're done with that.
I thought that was like a Where's Waldo thing, so...
No.
That's all I had on my pass-through.
And as we mentioned earlier, your ask for this budget sheet seems to be 345 grand more than the one you presented earlier this year. And if you just reiterate what you told me about what most of that's tied up with, just so everybody knows?
Sure, it's a long, several different things, so I'll just kinda speed through this so that I don't take a lot of time. But in professional services, if you need me to point you to a page, that might take me another long minute there, but it's a, it's one of the first one pages that the B part starts on. The professional services line went up 22,000, because since last meeting, our coastal engineer said that the sand search would not be completed by June 30th with permitting, so we have to carry that part forward to next year. 441 Utilities went up, because now if we're doing year-round parking, we gotta have portages there year-round, plus we gotta have weekend bathroom cleaning, because it's gotten to the point that my rec tech does bathrooms Monday through Friday, but Chris's crew has been trying to do them on the weekends, and they're just got more than they can handle. So that includes weekend bathroom cleaning, plus the, um, insurance went up a bit based on the replacement cost for the building. So that was a change that happened where they raised it, and I wanna think it was like $700, but I'm quoting that without having it in front of me.
Okay.
How often do we clean those bathrooms?
So the restroom trailers that sell, is he usually makes two passes a day? And then the way our, so in our summer season, when we've contracted for those in the past, they are done twice a day. In the, um, off-season, it's done once a day, except since the rec tech's come along, he hits all the major bathrooms. Now, PVI, we're on a three-time-a-week cleaning for most of them. The ones we're getting out here for the summer... The ones we're getting out here for the summer, they're mainly just to carry the concert, because the bathroom itself won't carry the load, is only going to be set up to begin with on a two-time-a-week cleaning. We may see that we have to increase that, that people may just migrate to those instead of using the real bathroom, but that's the plan based on the estimate at this time.
Okay, thanks.
What days are they cleaning?
They haven't made that a solid promise yet, because I reached out to a cost for them, but I did tell them I needed those over here cleaned as close as they could to Sunday afternoon, knowing that they probably don't do droughts on Sundays. But if y'all want me to continue down the list of changes, or do y'all want, do y'all have more questions on that?
Those are the big ones, right?
No, there's some more big ones. So 40, I told you the 45,000 was put in for Pinnacle for bathroom. Originally on March 8, the Block Q line had said 150 for stormwater, then the engineer had said it would go up to 200. I made you guys aware of that, I think it was the follow-on, but now we're just, that's a placeholder. Communications line went up a little bit by 1,000, because the, even though we hired the rec tech and all the salary was in last year, we haven't been reimbursing him for a cell phone. And all the public works employees, all our employees, he's using his cell phone to do business, and we need to take care of that. Public restrooms went up significantly, because the public restrooms line is a catch-all for not only the bathroom itself, but that's where we get the other portageons for the island for, for like the East End and Greensboro and that we put out. So those had to increase for paid parking, went year-round too, they'll have to stay out year-round. I told you about the excess and recreation line going up 35,000 with the ADA increase for the cost estimate, and the ADA work at Halsted, there was an increase of, for 4,000 for the, since the March meeting for that. And Rothschild and Davis Park went up about 10,000, based on the portageon rental quote that came in for out, for the summer concert series, polycarts, so we're going to have to have additional rollout trash cans, and the weekend bathroom cleaning for that site.
Thank you.
But weren't we cleaning the bathrooms over at the, or you're still cleaning the bathrooms over at the other site?
Yeah.
That's still open?
That's still open. We'll still do that.
Okay.
And we'll contract for the weekends twice a day, and the rec tech does it all week long, twice a day.
Go ahead. For that one.
All right, where are we?
I think we're on B now, 4B.
4B.
So this was just a little graphic that Tom created. He's not here, I'm sure you all heard that, his daughter had an emergency C-section this morning. Everyone's doing fine, but he couldn't be here, so I'll just talk to it, it's kind of self-explanatory. Just wanted to make sure that we see graphically, you know, here's your revenues from property tax, sales tax, other, parking, occupancy tax, grants, and then we have a savings and a borrowing on the left, and then the expenses are debt service, personal, governing body, all of our, you know, things, B part, and then whatever projects we have as far as must-do, should-do, and then at some point you draw the line. So that's the vision of how we would do the budget, and we'd like to not dip into savings, and we certainly don't want to borrow, which would increase the budget even more. And then the next page just is graphically showing how the debt has gone up significantly, and the, the green line is the revenue from taxes, property taxes, and now with the addition of Block Q and the pier, the debt is exceeding that at least for the next four years. Just wanted to graphically show that, you know, why we have to be a little more stringent with our budget in the coming years, if we don't want to raise taxes like they did last Okay.
Are we at 4C?
Yep. So if we look at May, I think what we're saying, what you're saying, David, is you don't need those meetings until you, you can present to, or send out on the 29th, the, so next week, Tuesday, obviously Heather's not going to be able to set up any interviews, so we could block, or cancel that one, Heather?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll cancel that one, and then we'll wait and see.
What's today? May 7?
Which is next Tuesday?
Cancel that one. Is that what you're saying, agreeing to, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
May 7, meeting previously scheduled for 3 o'clock, is now canceled.
And then we're going to hold off on the other ones until Heather talks to the lawyers and sees when they can-
Well, the earliest they said would be the 29th, so why would we-
No, no, that's not true. They, she only gave them the 14th, the 20th, 21st, she only gave them the 14th, the 22nd, and the 29th. She only gave them three options. So now they're going to, she's going to give, you know, open it up to whatever dates they can do, and see if we can do those dates also.
Yeah. If you guys could send me your availability first, it'd be easier than getting it-
That's right, Heather, you only gave them those three dates, and they only could choose one. So now we have more options that if they're available and we're available, we can meet a different time.
Yeah. And are you guys, do you want to do it all on the same day, or do you want to-
Yes.
We don't need to come in here five times to do the interviews. Well, I'll, you guys give me your availability, I'll see if I can get everybody to come on the same day, and we could go from there.
Sure, sure.
We wouldn't have a budget meeting, correct, on the 14th, unless we make it a lawyer meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But then you said the other group couldn't do it before the 29th?
The 29th was the first day they gave me. So then why would we not want to do them all on the same day? So it'll have to be the 29th or after. That is the truth. Well, I think-
No, because we don't have to do them all on the same day.
Yeah, I think we could agree that there's no budget meetings, and I'll work, no budget meetings until David gives us the message, and then I'll give you guys, we'll try to work out the lawyers, so that we can get everybody hopefully on the same day.
So we'll send you our availability and let you work the magic. Okay?
Yeah. But no budget meeting. So I could take this as a budget schedule, I could take the May off of there for everybody if that works. Correct. That's what I was trying to say.
So there are no-
May 21st will be the regular board of commissioners meeting.
So the 13th, we're not meeting?
14th. It's not scheduled. It's not scheduled at this time unless we get along-
14th.
But the one lawyer said they can do it on the 29th.
But the one lawyer said they could do it on the 14th, so if, if possible, if we can't get them all together, we may have to do them separate and have the opportunity to do it on the 14th.
If we get some clarity, we can, assuming there's sufficient time, we just put a notice out, it's canceled, right?
You don't even have to, I just want to send an agenda, so.
Okay.
Because either, because either way, I even have it labeled as proposed meeting calendar, so I just want to send an agenda for any of the meetings that we're going to have.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
I guess I'm the slowest one in the room. May the 7th, we, that's no longer.
That's a definite, yes.
Okay. So then the next week, do we have any meetings the next week?
Maybe.
Sydney said she's available that day, she was not available, and I don't know if I'll be able, I know everybody wants to meet on the same day, but I can't promise you I can get all three lawyers.
Okay, I have May the 14th a budget meeting.
I can't be here on the 14th. I wasn't going to be here anyway.
Is that still supposed to be on our schedule or not?
No budget meeting, but possibly a lawyer interview.
We're not going to remove-
So it's not budget now, it's a lawyer.
Correct, possibly. Heather's going to let us know.
Just possible, I mean, you can't schedule anything when it's just possible.
Okay. All right, so going to the next week, the 20th, do we have any meetings the 20th that week?
The 21st is our regular commissioner meeting.
So we are still doing that?
Yes, sir.
How about the next day, the 22nd, we're not doing that?
Not unless it's the lawyer.
The only one you can cancel is the 7th, right?
Is what?
The 7th.
What? That kind of makes it simpler. All right.
And then if by the- That really makes it hard for anybody to plan anything, if it's, I mean, you know, some of us have a life that we like to enjoy doing things. The sooner you give me your availability, the sooner I will get up with those three law firms and try to set it up for you.
I'll get right on it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Oh, first, say a-